Order, welcome to our February eighth council meeting. Start with the pledge of allegiance. You, uh, back in roll call. Counselor Windor.
Here.
Alter.
Here.
West.
Here.
Zadi. Chalada.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Demas.
Here.
Kate.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. Um. Well, the council president, Saps, Hopey, well, I first order of business. And very, president. Chalada.
I'd like. West.
We have a nomination for Councilman West. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
It's not to vote me off.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard. The, uh, the pay doesn't change. S- steed of sitting right hand of mayor, then. Well worth that. Counselors, um, also before you hear tonight, that entertaining motion to approve revise.
So move, your honor?
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Three, re revise. Everybody's got the same copy. Um, also counselors, um, item number three, uh, motion. Minutes. Forty-four, twenty-twenty. Councilman Chalada. Minutes, we have a second.
Second.
Second, so we call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then bring us to our presentation. Have free item number one, climb Wyoming, take climb on up. To the record, make sure that microphone is on. Tell us. Give us your update.
Great. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Jasmine Solar. I'm actually the assist- assistant director for Climb Wyoming here in Sweetwater County. Um, I'm going to be giving you a brief update of where we're at in the program as well as a little bit about us. And then I also have Kendra here with me. She is a graduate from our most recent CNA program which wrapped up in December. She's going to be sharing a little bit of her story with you. Um, first, just like to tell you, we've been in Wyoming thirty-four years, um, this September, and our mission is to serve low-income, single mothers, um, by helping them gain self-sufficiency through career training and job placements. Um, statewide, we have six sites and, um, between all those six sites, we have actually served twenty-five-hundred mothers in the state, and two-hundred-and-twenty-three of them, um, counting this program we just started are here in Sweetwater County. Um, with the population we serve, we see that the moms face several challenges, um, trying to get into the work field. Um, we typically work with a population who comes from generational poverty. And in generational poverty, um, we find that the women we work with have lacked, um, any opportunities to learn job skills or real-life experiences that would help them get better-paying jobs to support their families. Um, they also operate from places of very high stress levels, and when you're operating from those high-stress levels, um, it's really hard for them to, um, fully access and develop, um, what we call, um, executive functioning skills. Um, so executive functioning would be like your planning, your organization, um, goal-setting, just basic life skills to get you through every day. Climb is really honed in on those and developed aspects of our program to help the women gain those skills. So we have implemented life skills such as budgeting, boundary, um, healthy boundary setting, I should say, um, nutrition, uh, domestic violence awareness, um, several just as- aspects like that, as well as a mental health component that just helps the women show up as who they are and have a safe place to learn the skills that they need. And what that mental health component is, is not us saying, like, we think you need clinical help. It's us giving them a safe place to land in a group and learn together. Um, the other thing that I just want, um, to do is give you an update on where we're at. Um, so we recently wrapped up a CNA program in December of this year, last year. Uh, Kendra was a part of that. Um, we helped nine women get CNA licenses and placed them in jobs in this community. And, um, we also just started a CDL training, um, that started last week, and we this time have the opportunity to work with twelve women. It's the most we have ever worked with at one time. We're super excited for that opportunity because we are able to serve more women than we currently do, and it's going to be a huge deal. Um, in, uh, not Wyoming, excuse me, in Sweetwater County, um, of the women that we've served, we've had a ninety-four percent graduation rate overall. And, yeah, we've also seen an eighty-eight percent decrease in the use of food stamps just here in Sweetwater County historically. So, I mean, those are huge successes, um, and those successes couldn't be made possible without the support of the community. Um, just whether it be like monetary donation, monetary donations, supplies, work here, um, or just time. Um, I know Tim and Gleneys have donated time to us before. Um, those things are all huge in helping these women become successful. Um, so speaking of success, um, I don't want to log the whole stage. Um, I'd like Kendra to be able to talk a little bit more about her story and what her success was like with Climb.
Thank you guys for having me here tonight. Um. Around seventeen is, when I was seventeen, is when my life went downhill. I had an amazing upbringing with my family. I came from a very loving and warm, welcoming family. And I hit seventeen and I felt like I was an adult and I wanted to do whatever I wanted to do when I wanted to do it. And I did exactly that, and I dropped out of high school and I moved to Colorado to be with the man that I thought I was going to spend forever with. And I had a family and after I had my little boy, my life just took a turn for the worse and I didn't have anything to lean on and fall back on with not having a GED or diploma or previous job skills. And so I was just in a really dark place, and then I went back to the only place I knew that I could start up again was with my family. And then that's where I found Climb and I, my life changed for the better. I entered Climb doing it just solely for my kids and to give them a life that I had growing up. And somewhere in between doing Climb, I started doing it for me and learning to love myself again and let go of all the hate and anger I had inside of me. And that was a lot to do with the counseling that Climb provides for you and able to talk about all of your past traumas and experiences that you've been through. And so it was one of the bigger things to help me get a job, to not have so much anger inside. When I'd get constructive criticism, I would take it in instead of feeling like I'm being bullied or attacked. I would take it in and learn from it and grow with it. So I think that is like one of the biggest things from Climb for me. And then just being able to provide for my kids all on my own.
So what is, what is life like now, um, that you have?
Um, I used to be very dependent on my parents. Um, they would pay all my bills. They would do everything for me and for my kids at the same time. And now I am taking care of my two kids solely all by myself. I don't run to my parents for money as often. We still struggle, but I guess struggles is just getting up and getting the kids to school on time. And I'm able to give my kids the, everything that they want and that they deserve, and that is like the biggest thing for me because I'm accomplished in that and I no longer lean on family for financial reasons.
That, that?
Yeah.
And the struggle?
Yeah.
Counsel.
Thank you. Thank you.
So any question? What can city council?
You know, I'm filling in for Brittany tonight. Um, she just asked me to come in and give a brief update. Um.
She thought we'd like to, um. Get an update.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. From my seat, definitely, um, just still volunteering. Um, I know I mentioned when Gleneys come in, um, they help practice, um, interviews with the ladies and that's. I think you've done that before. We've asked.
No, the grad- she went to graduation for impressive.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, and we are going to move them to Monday this year so that this next program's try to make it not too, super inconvenient. So we are having it on a Monday night this year, but, yeah, just the continued support, I think the volunteer work, um. Thank you. Yeah, and then I actually have our, um, thank you for the support, uh, sites. Water, is that a second?
If you actually just.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You.
Kendra. Okay, item number two, we have RV rally updates. Lena Warren's.
I'm a tag along this trip.
First of all, mayor, city council, thank you so much for letting us be here. Uh, we appreciate all the support. Um, but we just wanted to come and kind of give you guys, um, a little bit of an update of some of the stuff that has been happening in, at the Sweetwater Events Complex and some of the stuff that's going to be taking place this summer. And I have some materials that I'll leave with you guys. But one of the things that is in this little packet, and I apologize that I didn't have more copies of this magazine, um, they only mailed us a couple, but I definitely wanted to make sure that you guys get to see this. But, um, there was also a magazine, the FMCA Motor Coach Association, um, mails out a monthly magazine. Their membership is over a hundred thousand people. And they have this fantastic article, um, and this was submitted by a couple that came to the Tiffin Rally in June of twenty-nineteen. And it was pretty much highlighting, um, how great a service and what a great town Rock Springs was. Um, they had some troubles with their motor coach. They had to stop by Cummins to get some help, and, um, they received great service. Um, and that was one of the things that we just wanted to, you know, highlight. Um, we are bringing these people into our area. They are spending money not just at restaurants, gas stations, that kind of stuff. I mean, this couple broke down. They needed a part, and they had great service. I know that Fremont Motors was also recognized by many of the Tiffin members, um, for providing great service. They had a, they have a group of people that are Jeep enthusiasts, and I think there was like eight or ten of them that took their Jeeps down there to get serviced. So these people are spending time in our area, spending money in our area. Um, and then Tiffin has also called recently to see about dates for August of twenty-twenty-one. So here they were here last June, and they're already looking at coming back. So we're pretty excited about that. Um, but this year, um, we have the Escapies RV Rally, and that is in June, June twenty-first through the twenty-sixth. And in this magazine, they did a fantastic little write-up, um, about our area and some of the things to look forward to. They, this magazine alone goes out to thirty thousand people, plus they have an online, um, magazine with the same information. And the Escapies RV Rally, we're really excited about. We talked to them two weeks ago, and they, their registration has gone crazy. They initially were hoping to have six hundred to seven hundred coaches. They've already received seven hundred people with registrations. Um, and they asked, how many more can we fit? And we said, we have twelve hundred sites. Let's double it, bring it on in. So, um, we are hoping over the next four months that we can maybe get up to a thousand with registration. We're not quite sure, but people are really excited to come to our area. Um, and then we will finish off the summer with the Newmar RV Rally, and that's in August. Um, and that's August twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth, and that'll bring about five hundred coaches to our area. So we're pretty excited. Um, these people, they're spending a lot of time. I know with the Escapies RV Rally, um, we're already getting phone calls on how early they can come in and stay. Um, about a third of them will probably be here the first part of June and stay almost the whole month. Um, so that's pretty exciting. And, you know, they, they want to check out the area, see what it has to offer and take their time. So we're pretty excited to see it.
Anything else? Question? So the August twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth rally is which one?
Newmar.
That's one of the big motor coach rallies. So similar to Tiffin, that's a brand of motor coach. So they'll be in those giant coaches that you saw last year. Um, Escapies is, uh, they're a little bit different because you can have pull-behinds or motor coaches. So they are actually more geared towards our area. So we're hoping that people will come out. They do have a public day on the Wednesday of their event where they invite people to come out and see what they're all about. We're hoping that some of those, or Kenny will go check it out. It's really, really interesting. We went to.
Tucson.
Tucson, Arizona last year, and, um, just a great group, super fun, um, very laid-back, very positive, sort of a younger demographic than the Tiffin group if you were out there. So lots of outdoorsy people. They will be out, you know, on their bikes and kayaking and playing and, and out exploring for sure.
It's good. Counsel. Savage?
Thank you. Um. Um, what kind of, what kind of thing, when you were down in Tucson, what kind of things did they ask you about Rock Springs?
Donuts.
Right.
What's that?
Donuts.
Donuts.
So the funny thing with RV rallies, um, we've learned ice cream and donuts. You have those two items?
Dark.
And they are happy. They are happy.
We must have, right, donuts because, um, airport director found out that it for, uh, the government.
Oh, yeah.
Security. Started like, uh, cowboy, um, Devon. Was caught at times sprinting down the runway, coming, leaving, off a box of donuts.
That's funny.
That's always good PR.
Right?
It's a thing, yeah.
We, we spent the whole week down there and, um, they were actually really interested in everything that we have to offer here. So one of the things that Lena has been working with travel and tourism and both Green River and Rock Springs Chamber is tours. So they do tours before the rally. They do tours during the rally, and they do them afterwards. So they really are a very active group. They wanted to go out. They want to go on the Wild Horse Loop Tour. They want to see the petrocliffs. They want to go up to, I think they're taking a trip to Fort Bridger to see the, the fort out there. So they really wanted to know everything that we have here. They're trying to pack as much as they can into those five days, but then they also wanted to give them stuff to do before and after because they do have the flexibility. So a lot of them will come weeks early and a lot of them will stay weeks. So it's pretty cool. So and they do have some economic impact studies on their own that they've done. So they, their economic impact is three billion. So pretty impressive for the. And we have a couple of things on both ends of their venue. So, um, we're sort of bookend, bookending them. So they're going to come in, um, Sweetwater Speedway will have a race beforehand. People will take that in when they're here. And then we have a really large World Series team roping that we just landed that's going to be that week after. So as those folks are moving out, somebody else will be moving in campground.
And, you know, the other thing that we did notice, uh, when we were in Tucson, Tucson had a fantastic facility. Um, but we're still, you know, top ten in the nation for campsites, um, and stuff like that. So there is something to be said for our area. Um, and as we continue to grow and, you know, move towards some of our goals, um, it is apparent that, you know, people are looking for new locations and they're excited to be here. So.
It helps all around, um, every bit, so buying food, restaurants.
You bet.
Coffee.
You bet. And although, all of these groups also bring trade shows with them and, um, service techs. Um, Newmar especially, I want to say that they, uh, request forty rooms for the entire RV rally because they're doing site or work on site for people. Um, and they come to the people to do the service and stuff like that. So these are people staying in the hotels and trade shows and stuff like that. So it's really kind of all-encompassing.
Yeah. A little bit of kudos, um, to folks out there, staff, we shut down the roads in the last, thirty-five, some, but, um, it's been a lot over the hundreds and hundreds of truckers that upstream of Rock Springs, Wyoming. I received. Message one trucker. And he just could not, hospitality, services that, um, that were provided. Kudos to everybody. Comfortable for all of them. At least one of them.
Right.
One, one.
There we go. One at a time. That's all it takes.
That's right. That's right. What, what are the facility for the?
So the campground restrooms are open with, with the shower unit. So our upper campground's there that, that's next to the golf course that we call that, um, Pilot Butte Campground. We leave that open with restrooms and showers. It's a little difficult for them to get to. It's quite a walk for them to get up there, but that's the closest shower facility we have that can be open all winter. And then I believe YDOT and Chief Pacheco worked together to bring out some porta-potties and stuff out there. So there are porta-potties on the grounds, and then they park in the grandstand parking lot. So we actually met, met with Drew Dunn today, who's our operations manager, and we were talking about if there was something that we could put out there. I don't know, billboard banner, something that said where they could get food delivered, you know, if there was a list of places locally that delivered food so that they could figure out how to get food out there. Um, we also talked about if we ever get to the expansion on the grandstands that we've talked to you guys about before, maybe there could be something built in there where there was a restroom shower unit in that area that they would be able to utilize that we could keep open in the winter. But for now, they have the space and a place to shower and be safe at least. But it'd be nice to be able to figure out if we could even some food services out there.
Well, and I do, I do believe that Native Sun and the Food Dude have on their own, uh, efforts kind of gone out and tried to provide food out there. So.
Big thing.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah. That's good to know. Appreciate the report. Uh, forward to, uh.
Thank you. We'll start these on both ends.
Okay. That being said, item number three, we have, uh, proclamation for random acts of kindness. And, uh, Kate Gil, Leah, would she like to have about for a half hour? And then I told her we didn't have that much time, so. You sure you don't want to get up? Okay, well, she will receive our proclamation. Proclamation. Whereas the city of Rock Springs recognizes the value of acts of kindness that are performed without prompting or reason, and how these acts can positively impact the person offering kindness, the person receiving the act of kindness, and those witnessing. And acts of kindness can be performed by any person in the city of Rock Springs regardless of age, origin, education, gender, religious beliefs, lifestyle, or abilities for the good around them. And kind individuals can create a more caring community and help to perpetuate genuine acts of kindness within their city, state, even throughout the world. And we seek to cultivate thoughtful and compassionate residents by teaching our youth to make a difference through random acts of kindness. And Random Acts of Kindness Week recognized as an international celebration intended to encourage all of us to participate in acts of kindness in our homes, schools, businesses, and our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Timothy G. Como, mayor of the city of Rock Springs, hereby declare the week of February sixteen, twenty-second, noted that doesn't happen. Twenty-twenty to be Random Acts of Kindness Week in Rock Springs, Wyoming, and I encourage all of our citizens of our community to practice random acts of kindness in the spirit of compassion, kindness, goodwill towards all. Thank you. Those. With this, um, want to speak? Okay, that would go onto the public hearing section, section of our agenda with, which we have one public hearing, a public hearing on the application of microbrewery, winery, restaurant, retail, limited bar and grill restaurant license for the period of April first, twenty-two, to March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, of which we'll take action on business item number one. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the public? Scouts? Here's the deal. We have scouts and deserve to be recognized. What troop are you with? Eighty-six? Honored to have you here with us. You want to speak on this public hearing? Ain't bad. Okay. Well, we're glad to have you here with us. To, uh, close the public hearing, on to petition. Um. Petition. I address the council on any issue whatsoever listed. Anyone? Close the petition section of our agenda, on towards, uh, officer and staff reports. Uh, item number one, we have the Health and Safety CAF for January twenty-twenty. Two, the Financial Support Summary for January twenty. And three, the acknowledgment of financial disclosure statement. Motion for officers and staff reports.
So move, your honor.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second? Seconds, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So on to our council board reports. Uh, we have, um, item number one, the Main Street Board Meet Minutes, January thirteenth, twenty-twenty. Two, the Rock Springs Oracle Board Meet Minutes, January twenty. Specific purpose of fact. Um, give us an update.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Um, as many of you know from our last meeting, amount that we've been distributed from Board of County Commissioners is the twenty-nine million. Talked that we'd kind of, uh, sleep on it in each direction we wanted to head. Want to accept that or ask for more? Spoke with a number of you, some different discussions, charged some different ideas that I had, I think, and hold firm on the forty-two million dollar amount. It's probably a little bit greedy. So fortunately we had to accept that defeat in regards to the multi-use facility. Um, but they cut a little bit deeper than that. If you recall, the multi-use was a million fifty thousand. That ended up being about a million four hundred and ten. So that leaves us shy by about three hundred and sixty thousand with, uh, our core projects as well as our other sponsorship projects. So the idea that I had and spoke with some of you about was maybe asking the Board of County Commissioners to make us hold on additional three hundred and sixty thousand, allow us to still continue to sponsor the other two projects and not have to cut any deeper on that. He was traveled down to Cheyenne last week and mainly there to lobby the legislature, but it was actually kind of convenient that we could lobby some of the commissioners at the same time. So we did have some conversations with two or three of them that seemed open to the idea. So we actually sent an email out yesterday hoping to amend their distribution today. That did not take place. I watched the table ten. Um, but they plan on putting it on their agenda for next meeting, which is in March. Still trying to hear back from the other smaller communities, as far as their priorities and everything. Told them we're going to hold firm, certainly on our core projects. Do you have to cut? It's going to have to come with sponsorship, so. Four of the five open to it. Continued waiting game, but hope it's out in our favor and we. See if all have any, but differently.
Counselors? Um. Savage?
So, so what's left? The, the Y and, uh, airport. Is that right?
Yep. Yeah, so the Y is at three and a half million. The airport was three point three-six million. I did put some emphasis on there that a good chance, the Y, I had a conversation with a boss today and she just kind of reiterated that, you know, if we do end up cutting. The Y, I had a conversation with my boss today and she just kind of reiterated that, you know, if we do end up cutting her, it pretty much cuts the project. Recall their three and a half million request was like four million, took out a half million furniture. So she indicated we're going to have to go after additional grants opportunities, furnish the facility, cut it back, three hundred and sixty thousand. Much as far as expand airports already utilizing federal aviation administration as well as Business Council, YDOT, so that could go. Chance it's going to go back to county or perhaps us as well. Trying to throw some of that around. Seem agreeable to it, but see how it shakes out.
Well, Councilor West, I think that's great logic. It makes sense, um. Some. Or. See. The logical move based. Thirteen, cut. For up.
It did, if I could, I spoke with Heather Anderson, current members were the ones kind of heading up the multi-use facility. I think Melissa Thornhill. Or I can read it, whatever you were, yeah.
So my name is Melissa Thornhill and one of those involved in the multi-use facility project. Heather, Heather Anderson's our speaker, but she can't be here tonight. Um, we'd like to thank you personally, um, those that supported the multi-use facility as part of the six cent tax initiative. After seeing the allocation of funds set by Sweetwater County Commissioners and the fact that Rock Springs is underfunded, almost exactly by the amount of our project, it was evident the county did not support a project of this type. It's sad because not only does this project support the youth of the community, but it's also one of the few projects present that actually would bring outsiders to our area and spend money. Money that's collected is lodging and sales tax, uh, money that pays for motels, food, gas, wood, and retail items purchased from our local merchants, money that allows businesses to hire and keep employees. Um, this has a direct impact on all citizens of our county regardless if you use a facility or live in Rock Springs. It's imperative that as we move forward, we find other sources of revenue, both as a city, county, and state. To the Rock Springs City Council, your visionary mindset is much appreciated, um, much appreciated, and we thank you very much.
Well, I, I can tell you, I, um, I thank you guys for the work you've done. A hard run at it, but that being said, don't lose, don't lose sight of, of the need. So, um, most always it's, um, infrastructure needs, but, um, I've always said there needs to be some quality of life projects as well. So, uh, as we move forward and take down some of these projects, if we hit that off of our list, complete. Thank you for your. Um, one other issue, council board reports, I wish everyone enough that, um, the legislative reception, I think, was, was. Covered a lot of ground, got the opportunity not only to lobby legislators, but, um, do some local work with them. Taylor met a lot of people that runs the way, pizza went a long way, and, um, um, we're still working bills, got back going through the system. But don't be afraid to track those, send your comments to your legislators. All in all, well done, everybody. Work that went down quickly for. Everybody that helped out, it was a great opportunity. Well, well. But with that, I'm going to motion approve all the council board reports placed on file.
Your Honor? I, I've got something that I wanted to mention. So on March ninth? Seventh? Okay. Don't go on March ninth. March seventh at ten o'clock, we are, um, having a polar plunge. And I would like to challenge those in the room that would like to be on a team with me. We need, um, five, and you can fundraise, it's, uh, fifty dollars each. And, um, it's for the Special Olympics and we're bringing that back. It's been several years we had it, Chief. And, um, not sure who, who all is, um, ramrodding this. You and. Go ahead, take over. I, I got it, I got it started. Mayor, uh, Councilor Savage. So the jackal jump is part of law enforcement toward un, unraising the Special Olympics. It's a winter event, uh, and it's, uh, seven, did send. Counselors in the city. Should be in time to the entire. Forming that.
Explain this pumpkin.
Pumpkin skin pool is basically just a, um, tank. And that water. I.
Well, that's. Not this time of year.
And.
The pond or the, the swim?
Swim.
Okay, March seventh, ten a.m.
So Chief, where can people find more information? What's the, is it on Facebook? Is it on the website?
It's on our website. Also.
I think we all got an email.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking about the public, maybe the Boy Scout.
Yeah.
Cold water's good for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Savage. Um, did we get a motion to approve the council board reports placed on file? Uh. And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's going to move on to correspondence. Um, we have. Correspondence. Correspondence placed on file.
So moved, Your Honor.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills in section of our agenda, item number one, the bills and claims from February eighteenth, twenty.
Your Honor?
Councilman Windor?
I move to approve the bills and claims from February eighteen, twenty.
Do you have a motion? Bills and claims from February twenty, do you have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record show, item number two, the salaries for February seventh.
Your Honor, I move to approve the salaries for February seventh, twenty twenty.
Do you have a motion to approve salaries for February seventh, twenty twenty? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's going to bring us on to our new business items. Item number one, under new business, we have the request from the Administrative Services Department for approval of new applications for microbrewery, winery, restaurant, retail, limited, bar and grill, and resort. Liquor license, period of April first, twenty twenty, to March thirty first, twenty twenty one, Council, pleasure.
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve this request.
Have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number two, request from the Finance Department for approval of new Cobra rates for the period of March first, twenty twenty, through December thirty first, twenty twenty.
Your Honor?
Councilman Savage?
I move to, uh, approve this request for new Cobra rates.
Do you have a motion to honor this request? Second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three, the request from the Engineering Operations Public Services Department for permission to bid the twenty twenty concrete replacement phase two, the twenty twenty street overlay, and the twenty twenty weed mitigation project. Council, pleasure? Councilman Schlada? Do you have a motion to approve this request? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four, the request from Engineering and Operations Public Services Department for permission to extend the two thousand eighteen fuel contract to the current contract holder, OMAX Oil Sales Incorporated, for a period of one year. Your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Windor?
I move to approve this request.
Have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five, the request from the Police Department for permission to apply for the two thousand twenty-one highway safety grant, Council, pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve this request.
Do we have a motion to honor this request? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six, the request from the Fire Department for permission to apply for a FEMA assistance to firefighters' grant for radios. Counselors, pleasure? Councilman Schlada? Do we have a motion to honor this request from the Fire Department? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven, request from the Fire Department for permission to apply for a FEMA assistance to firefighters' grant for turnout. Pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Sounds better. Um, I move to approve the request for a grant for new turnout gear.
Okay, we have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight, the request from Parks and Recreation Department for permission to fill a vacant lifeguard instructor position in the Family Rec Center. Pleasure? Councilman Schlada?
I'm.
Have a motion to, West, do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number nine, request from the Ponderosa Bar for a liquor catering permit for the Mule Fanatic event on March fourteenth, twenty twenty, from three P.M. to midnight. At the Sweetwater Events Complex, Council, pleasure?
Your Honor, I've moved to approve this request.
Well, we do have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That cleans up our new business items. We'll move on to resolution, resolution one. Item one, resolution two thousand twenty dash one seven.
A resolution approving local financial institutions to be designated as deposit areas for public.
Council, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Windor?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash seven.
Do we have a motion to honor resolution twenty twenty dash one seven? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor Halter? West?
Yes.
Schlada? Savage?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Tate? Stane? Windor?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes. Item number two, resolution two thousand twenty dash one eight.
A resolution accepting and approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, Eden Barson Fire Protection District, Sweetwater County Fire District One, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said memorandum of understanding.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Savage?
I have a quick question for the chief, though. How often does a turnout gear have to be replaced?
Oh, don't get him started.
Well, just a real quick answer. Savage?
It's savage.
Turnout gear. No matter how much you use it. Just curious. Thank you. Um, Your Honor, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash eighteen, purchase turnout gear.
Um, we have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash one eight by, by Councilor Savage. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor West?
Yes.
Schlada?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Windor?
Yes.
Halter? Eric Como?
Yes. Item number three, resolution two thousand dash one nine.
A resolution accepting and approving a memorandum of understanding, city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, the Wyoming Department of Transportation, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said memorandum of understanding.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash nineteen.
We have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in roll call.
Councilor Schlada?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Windor?
Yes.
Halter? West?
Yes.
Eric Como?
Yes. Item number four, resolution two thousand twenty dash two zero.
A resolution accepting and approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and the city of Green River, Wyoming, Sweetwater County, Wyoming, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, Matthew L. McBurnett, city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, execute said memorandum of understanding. Said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Halter? We, you have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty twenty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in roll call.
Councilor Savage?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Windor?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Schlada?
Yes.
Eric Como?
Yes. Item number five, resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-one.
A resolution accepting and approving ASO group plan changes with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Wyoming, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor, execute said ASO group plan changes on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash two one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor Demas?
Yes.
Tate? Windor?
Yes.
Halter? West?
Yes.
Schlada?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Eric Como?
Yes. Item number six, resolution two thousand twenty dash two two.
A resolution accepting and approving amendment one to the cooperative agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett, city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, execute said amendment one on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-two? Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Councilor Tate? Windor?
Yes.
Halter? West?
Yes.
Schlada?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Eric Como?
Yes. Item number seven, resolution two thousand twenty dash two three?
A resolution accepting and approving a contract for professional services, AFC Engine Services for the Pilpik Tech Ross Modeling Project. Amount of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and nine dollars, and authorizing Timothy A. Como, Matthew L. McBurnett, city clerk, execute said contract.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
To approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-three.
Do you have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash two three? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, call and roll call.
Councilor Windor?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Schlada?
Yes.
Savage?
No.
Demas?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Eric Como?
Abstain, and I abstain due to the fact that I employed by the engineering firm that was selected and successful in a bid proposal project. Item number eight, resolution two thousand twenty dash two four.
An amended resolution accepting and approving proposal with Audio Matrix, sixty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars, recent, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett, city clerk, execute said proposal on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
I'd just like to thank Matt, Bina, for all their work on this. It's kind of sticker shock when you see it on paper, much it costs to upgrade this type of system in here, but they did solicit three different companies, uh, one of which was well over a hundred thousand dollars, the other one went out of business, so. this is something I campaigned on. Uh, pretty much been bugging Matt about it for over a year, so appreciate your patience. But thanks to you being in with that, I would approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-four.
Counselors, we do have a move to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash two four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's called. Roll call.
Councilor Halter? West?
Yes.
Shlada?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Windorf?
Yes.
Eric Como?
Yes. And a little bit of an update for those who are wondering what we did. Scouts. Who has homework still? That was a half of a hand, that. Good section session, wait here. So, so this room is quite old and, um, the microphones struggle. Visual effects struggle, so basically we're gonna rewire the entire room with new microphones. Take out. Um, overhead. vectors. Eighty-six inch flats. There. There. When we watch, on up there. See it? Um, there. Two then. Back displays. Plug in. Mic? Mic? Fire? So everybody hopefully heard, um, and then, uh, move towards the direction of, um, doing a more of a live stream. Project. As it's our...
Lobby.
Oh, the lobby. So for those of individuals that are out in the lobby, the room might be crowded or they're out there. There'll be, uh, leave a sixty-five inch display in the lobby. Could then count lobby. It wasn't. It would then roll, um, all of our records. Information for the City of Maine Army Channel.
Your honor, just to clarify, we will still be in the channel.
Right.
So it'll be streaming.
For those that go watch. This is a tough thing with us because, um, several, especially, um, um, older generation like to go out and get their newspaper on the porch or it comes in the mail and a couple days later, twice. Always struggle with trying to get our signal. But now we'll have an opportunity to make sure that we get out, uh, our uh, to individuals that want to watch like more efficiently, um, especially have storms like.
They can watch in here.
What's that?
Right now, they've just kind of been watching without much hearing, cause like...
Yeah.
Be a nice change.
It is a struggle. They're all watching, trying to read lips. Down and struggle. I do appreciate all, all your work and help. So with that, um, on resolution two thousand twenty dash two five.
A resolution accepting and approving fireworks production contract with Fireworks West International, authorizing Timothy Akomu as mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, Matthew Elmer Burnett, clerk of the City of Rock Springs, said contract on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Shlada? We do have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash two five. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Councilor West?
Yes.
Shlada?
Yes.
Savage?
No.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Windorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Eric Como?
Yes. And with that, I would just like to say that there has been a couple of comments over why we spend twenty thousand dollars on fireworks. And I can tell you that I believe it was taken away at one back in the day. And, um, I think it's a very vocal minority. I think overall that is a whole, um, appreciate the gap. Fireworks are not cheap. I can remember the day where we spent twice uh, for fireworks display, um, all in all, Fourth of July, we need to commemorate, um, our great nation and, um, do what we can to make sure that, um, we provide, uh, a, a display for them. Appreciate everybody's support on that. Does conduct the city council meeting this week.